Chair would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Barrington. It is Wednesday, May 18th, 7:02. And I will ask the clerk to please call roll.
President Richardson.
Here.
Trustee Burke.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell. Trustee Perkins.
Here.
Trustee Rippey.
Here.
Trustee Schaller.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Markless. Every two years we have the pleasure of either welcoming back or welcoming new trustees who have prevailed in the prior election. And we are now under agenda item number four, which is the administration of the oath of office to our re-elected officials who are present, which are trustee Burke and trustee Schaller. And Mr. Bateman, if you'll please do the honors.
Gentlemen, why don't you stand on this side of the podium. Okay, I'll see if you can...
Sir.
Sir.
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Andy Burke.
John Schaller.
Having been elected to the office.
Having been elected to the office.
A village trustee in the village of Lake Barrington.
Village trustee in the village of Lake Barrington.
In the county of Lake Oforsette.
In the county of Lake Oforsette.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of village trustee.
The duties of the office of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Mr. Bateman, I believe you will do that for trustee Thompson separately off mine.
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations to trustee Burke and trustee Schaller as well as trustee Thompson. Your willingness to continue to serve is greatly appreciated. Agenda item five this evening is a few loaded minutes from the April meeting. A is the minutes of the special committee of the whole. And B is the minutes of the regular report of trustees' fees. Are there questions, edits, or comments for the clerk with regard to either set of minutes? There being none, chair would like a motion to approve and block. So, trustee, you can move by trustee Rippey, seconded by trustee Schaller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair would also ask that members consent that the record may only apply business days for the purposes of necessary technical reforming amendments that we will discover subsequently. That's yours on the House Judiciary Staff in Washington. Agenda item six, the president's remarks. We're just about to say that we're going to move up the board. We're going to hear... Mike Ross is here from Lake Barrington Woods. We've talked about this in our committee call before. And Jim, can I take the consent agenda out of order and just do A right now so that Mike can get about his evening? Mike, I should come up and we'll go to agenda item A right now. I want to disclose for the record, my 97-year-old dad has lived in Lake Barrington Woods 16 years. My 80, almost 89-year-old aunt has lived there five or six. And I've gotten to know Mike and his team, and they do a spectacular job. You all know that I travel extensively for business, and I am able to rest easy that they are... Both my dad and my aunt are protected and geared for it. And we're very, very grateful. The nursing staff there, Coco and Daisy and the others are just first-rate. The folks at the desk are polite and helpful and kind. And, you know, your marketing director, Pam, I think could sell an icebox to someone living in the Arctic. So, I'm thrilled. So, I... Counsel tells me that I don't have to accuse myself. I wanted to disclose that I've gotten to know you and Lake Barrington Woods quite well. Why don't you tell us a little bit about the recent remodel, and I was delighted to attend the reception in the hill. And then I'll ask... I'll go around and see if trustees have comments or questions for it.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Presby. We just finished a multimillion-dollar renovation in Lake Barrington Woods. Lake Barrington Woods has been there for over 18 years, providing wonderful top-quality services to our seniors, both independent and assisted living for those 18 years. We have a tremendous building. Probably first and foremost, our team is amazing. The longevity that we have within our community is almost unparalleled within the industry. We've got staff that were originally there from when the building was built. Romero, one of our cooks. Helene, overnight concierge, full-time, has been there over 17 years. Pam, as Mr. Hirsch has mentioned, has been there for over 15 years as the director of sales and marketing. The list goes on and on with decades of technology there. So, I can't say enough about the community. Our renovation project was fantastic. We renovated all of the common area spaces of Lake Barrington Woods, all floors. New flooring, new wall coverings, new window treatments, paint, new LED lighting, new furniture, the whole kibboodle. We also did a whole new roof last year as well, too. So, tremendous improvements that we've been able to make over this last year. And we are just literally wrapping up the project now with our elevator cab renovations. So, we've got one and a half elevators left to do. And then we are officially done with just some random pieces of replacement furniture rolling in. So, if you haven't had an opportunity to visit Lake Barrington Woods at any point in time, I definitely recommend it now. The amenities are fantastic. We also have an indoor heated swimming pool, always 87 degrees, aquatherapy, skilled rehab services on-site. So, just again, I can't say enough about the community, and I've enjoyed very much working there over the last four years myself.
Thank you. And before I call on the trustees for comments or questions, is it Mr. Bateman or Ms. Dalton Lane will just briefly convey what we're going to be considering here?
Sure, I'll give it a go. The Lake Barrington Woods petitioned the village to allow modification to the limitation of the maximum number of assisted dwelling units in their facility. They have 196 dwelling units. I don't know if I should call them condos or apartments, but 196 apartments. And their state license gives them the ability to serve 100 of those at any given time as assisted living units. So, what that means is if somebody's living in one of their units and need temporary or long-term assisted living care, they can provide that without that resident having to move to another portion of the building. So, their original special use permit only allowed for 42 assisted living units. And what was it, 16 years ago when they... 1998? No, I guess it's been a little bit more than that.
1994.
Yeah, so their original ordinance in 98 only permitted 42 of those units. And at that time, it was just based on the concern of if the fire department could service them with ambulance calls. And since that time, there has been no issue. And we received a letter from the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District saying they had no objections.
Okay. Okay, I can... I'll start on my left with trustee Burke. Comments or questions?
Well, first, comments. Thanks for being here, Mike. I've had the luxury of being here for a couple of different events and having had parents who went through sort of, you know, assisted living, senior living, et cetera, out-of-state. You know, I learned very quickly how to tell... How to be able to gauge what a quality facility is. You know when you walk in. You know from the people, both who are the residents, just by looking at them, and then you know from the staff, you knowing that they're committed people who... Or they're doing it, or they're punching a clock and doing a job. And based upon the residents that I've met there and just engaged with them at different events, you can tell that they're happy, healthy people, and that says a lot for what you do. I would love to see the renovations because I haven't been here since you did it. So, congratulations on that. The question I have for you is, so you have 196 apartments total. How many today are considered assisted?
So, we are actually licensed for 100 apartments for assisted living through the Illinois Department of Public Health.
You're licensed for 100. That's a good distinction, right?
Yes.
So, what we're permitting is we previously... We have admitted that to the 42, correct? So, I'm assuming then, though, as you... As that shifts more and more to assisted, then that has an impact on your staffing, right?
There is that potential, yes. So, ultimately, our staffing model would take into account anyone receiving assisted living services has a very defined customized care plan. So, ultimately, we're engaging from a contractual standpoint and provide all of those services to that individual. And then any time that changes or fluctuates, if necessary, our staffing also changes and fluctuates to accommodate those specific needs.
Got it. Does the state mandate anything about staffing per resident or anything in that nature? I know they do in like what you would call care facilities and skilled nursing facilities, but I don't know if that's true in assisted living.
Absolutely. So, I'll set up with the Illinois Department of Public Health, those specific patient or resident staff ratios only exist in skilled nursing environments.
Okay.
You have to be a licensed nursing co-administrator and operate skilled nursing facilities. So, that remains in skilled nursing. With assisted living, the regulation simply states that the facility or the community must have enough staff able to manage all of the care needs of the residents through their care plan process. We do also receive an annual unannounced survey by a licensed nurse from the Illinois Department of Public Health, and they will go through and conduct a survey. Again, it's unannounced and spontaneous. It could take anywhere from one to four days, and they'll go through all of the resident records, charts, resident interviews, make sure all the policies and procedures are in place. I can also confirm that over the last five years, we've been deficiency-free through that process.
Right, great. Yeah, I'm just thinking as this continues to grow, for you guys to continue to provide that same level of service. It's obviously at some point going to happen. It's not your intention to try to keep staffing flat while moving more and more people into assisted living, right? So, no, I support it, and I think that it's a wonderful facility, and we're lucky to have it here so close to our residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Schaller.
As trustee Burke has indicated, it's an excellent facility. And I would echo what he said. When you walk in, the atmosphere is unlike many similar operations where it's depression, it's people wandering around, it's just someplace I don't want to ever be. But Lake Barrington Woods is, as I said, completely different. It's always upbeat, Pam is great, obviously, and the staff. And your residents all seem to be... It's not like somebody's... I'm going to even have an occasion for the most part. They even sit outside when they say hello to you when you're walking in. How many of the units right now are assisted living?
81.
You do have 81. That can fluctuate, too, because if somebody...
Absolutely.
...expires or whatever, you can go back to a regular...
Absolutely. And as Mr. Hirsch mentioned before, too, we also have an opportunity where we have what's called a floating or swimment license, which is fairly unique to us. The benefit of that is if we have someone living, for instance, independently, let's say for eight years, and then at a certain point in time they'd like to engage our assisted living services, they do not have to physically move to another apartment or another part of the building. We can license the apartment that they're in and bring the services in there to their home already, so they do not have to move or go through any type of transition like that.
So, you actually do have to make that transition of licensing of that particular room to an assisted living?
It's actually a very simple process. It would just be a matter of the only notification we're required to give is when the Illinois Department of Public Health comes in, we're required to provide at that moment a list of the units that we do have licensed.
Well, I know of living in Lake Barrington. Sure, a lot of your clientele comes from our development, and everyone that I ever talked to that has made that vote has been very, very happy with their decision to go there. It takes a lot of burden off of them from living in a regular home or condo to being out there in a city development. And I'm glad we do have the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District there just minutes away from anything else. So, gratitude, and thank you very much for everything, and good luck moving forward.
Thank you.
And I have to... I likewise have to get over there and take a look at the remodel.
Please do.
Please do.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Trustee Perkins.
Thank you. Welcome. Thanks for coming. And I have not had the pleasure of visiting your...
It's different.
But yeah, I think it sounds fantastic. I love how they don't have to move from one apartment to the next. Because you get... You know, I know my parents are very... You know, they're older, and they do not want to move. You know, they want to stay where they are. And so, not having to make that transition into, you know, unit is very nice. So, yeah, I 100% support the move. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Rippey.
Thank you. I appreciate what you're doing for the residents, and I support it. That's all.
Well, thank you both. Thank you both, excuse me. Chair would therefore like a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-0-5. Thank you. An ordinance granting further amendments to an amended and restated special use for a senior citizen housing plan to open. And I have a motion. So moved. My trustee Schaller, may I please have a second?
Second.
My trustee Burke, thank you both. I'll ask the clerk to please call roll.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Aye.
President Richardson.
I will abstain because my dad is a gentleman, but I enthusiastically support him. Thanks. Excuse me.
Lisa, is that 04 or 05? This is 04. Oh, 05. It is 05? Okay, surprise. Just wanted to make sure. Yep, there you go.
Oh, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Bill. And the rest of the house is always out of... Thank you. Excellent. I would move to agenda item seven, which is the first opportunity in the agenda for the public to address a board on non-agenda items. Is there anyone seeking recognition for this purpose? Okey-dokey. Well, then, we'll move back to agenda item number eight, and this time consider agenda item eight-B, consideration of a 2018 ICC swimming pool barrier. Ordinance, do you want to set this up?
Sure. The village had, over the last year or so, some residents come in and ask if they could put in a pool cover instead of fencing around their swimming pool. And these pool covers that they were referring to meet the ICC 2018 code for safety. And they're basically an automated hardcover where people could stand on top of them. They're great, especially if you have small children, where a fence might prohibit somebody from finding your fence and jumping in. This covers the pool and locks it so that a child can't wander out and fall into the pool, or a teenager having a pool party when you're gone. So, we looked through that, and what we're proposing is to adopt the portion of the ICC that allows these pool covers, and they have to meet certain specifications. And so, the resident would have the choice. They can do the fence, as is in our current code. They can do this pool cover. They can do both, you know, but they would have to go with just one or the other.
Questions for the administrator? Mr. Bateman, chair would like a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-0-6. Thank you, ma'am. An ordinance amended the village of Lake Barrington Village over the head. Motion, please. So moved. My trustee Burke, may I please have a second?
Yeah.
My trustee Rippey, thank you both. Gentlemen, clerk, please call roll.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Aye.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes. Agenda item nine this evening is a... Well, excuse me, a public hearing on our annual appropriation ordinance. I'm going to ask Mr. Bateman, by way of setting this up, just to explain the difference between the appropriation ordinance and the village's governing budget documents, so that there can be no such thing.
The appropriation ordinance is that legal document that authorizes the maximum spending allowed by law. So, that sets your maximum caps for spending unless that document... Unless that ordinance is further amended sometime during the village's fiscal year. The financial plan, on the other hand, is that management document used by the village to guide its financial decisions and expenditures going forward throughout the year. So, one's the legal document, and one's the management document.
And typically, the amount in the appropriation ordinance is deliberately...
We put it basically 20% higher.
And the purpose of that is that additional appropriating authority is because we want to account for potential unforeseeable events.
Exactly.
For example, if there was a severe thunderstorm and there was significant damage to village property, we would have the legal authority to spend money.
To go all right away and take advantage. Yeah.
Are there questions for the village attorney over the administrator on this? There are. Bateman, chair would like a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-0-6.
Nope, it's 04. That's where the 14...
Which one is it then?
This is 04.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Amendment of the village of Barrington program. Motion, please.
So moved.
Moved by Rippey, seconded by Schaller. Burke, call the roll, please.
Trustee Rippey.
Aye.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes.
Okay. We also need to accept the financial plan.
Yeah, and I just called the same question twice. Boy, I'll tell you, I'll be living with Randy here soon. We have to... I apologize, and I got confused. We went out of order. That happens all the time. The appropriation ordinance and the financial plan are now under random agenda item nine. I apologize for the confusion. It's my fault. We're going to have a short public hearing where witnesses are able to come in and give a comment. We will close the public hearing, and then we will have two motions. One, to accept the 2020 financial plan. And then, secondly, the appropriation ordinance itself. So, my mistake earlier, I apologize. Chair would therefore like a motion to open a public hearing regarding the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2020. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Rippey. May I please have a second? Trustee Schaller, thank you. Now you can call the roll. You had to write the second.
Trustee Rippey.
Aye.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Okay, we are now in the public comment period for the hearing concerning the annual appropriation ordinance. Is there anyone seeking recognition for this purpose? If there is no one in the audience seeking recognition for this purpose, is there any member of the board that wishes to come in at this time? All right. Chair would like a motion to close the public hearing regarding the appropriation ordinance for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2020. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Trustee Rippey, seconded by trustee Schaller. Thank you both. Clerk, call the roll again.
Trustee Rippey.
Aye.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, now you can talk about the financial plan. So, well, we will have a motion to accept the fiscal 2020 financial plan certified statement of use in fiscal policy. Before I call that question, I'll yield to the administrator for comment, and to the treasurer if she wishes.
Sure, I'll start, and Ms. Hirsch can jump in here. So, on behalf of the village staff, I am very pleased to present the 2020 financial plan. We've talked about it over the last three months in our committee, a whole meeting, so I'm sure you're all very well familiar with it. But I would like to recognize all your efforts, and especially to Treasurer Hirsch and Accountant Debbie Vernon for working on this document. So, as we previously stated, the financial plan is kind of our working document, whereas the appropriation ordinance sets our legal spending limit authority. And our 2020 financial plan, which we also call the budget, that's what I call it, it does result in reduction of our fund balance of about $222,000. So, if you turn to page seven in the book that they have, you'll notice that the bottom line under the budget column for FY 2020, that our... It shows our expenses exceeding revenues by about $222,000. But what this really is, if you go two columns to the left over, we're showing a surplus in our estimated 2019 budget of $246,000. So, really, what we're doing is about equal. You know, we've got about $20,000 other difference there. So, we're really a little ahead of the game. We have to show it as a deficit in this budget because the way the fiscal years work, but we're about even at this point. So, I just wanted to point that out to you as we go forward in looking at things. So, our... This financial plan still seeks to achieve the 60% fund balance, which maintains adequate reserve to operate our village without pulling on too much cash. And the five-year capital improvement program that's in this document for both the motorfield tax fund and water and sewer fund were developed following our continued monitoring of the village's roadway system and our water and sewer facilities and our business park. So, that's the major points of this, what we've done, and a lot of it except in the past few months. And so, Treasurer Hirsch, do you have any additional comments this time?
No, I think you did a great job. And there's really just sort of three large projects this year. Anderson Road, the paid peddling property we developed, and then a SCADA system in the water sewer fund. Those are kind of our three main projects that are in the budget plan.
Yeah, so those will all be worked on this year.
Are there questions for the treasurer or the administrator on this? I want to thank you for...
I know where you just spent some time going through the book. A lot of time is spent with the verbiage and the numbers, and it's... And please call with any questions.
The... You can tell that serious work has been done here. It's not simply because it's presented in a nice way, but the analysis is high-quality. I had the unfair advantage of Karen and Randy walking me through a fair amount of this prior to this evening, but this is a great document. It's a public document, so anybody who wishes to look at it can look it up online. So, post it online. And, you know, the big question, you touched on it, that I think is so important, there's a legitimate debate about how much reserves should be held. Because proof is says we should always hold enough to account for a rainy day. And, you know, the informal name for that kind of stuff is a rainy day fund. On the other hand, it's not our money. And so, there's a balance between how much of other people's, that is our residents' money, do we take from them and hold? And versus... Because we don't want to take any money that we really, really need. Because people require for the money. On the other hand, we have to be prudent enough to say if there was a major event that we're not able to foresee, we're not caught flat-footed in a financial sense. So, this 60% of the annual operating budget is kind of the number that this board has developed under your guidance, Karen's and Debbie's, and our outside leaders. And I think it's a good number for us to strive for. Some years will be a little bit, some years a little lot, and hopefully we'll never have that rainy day. But, you know, states troubles and so forth, it's prudent. And I want people to know that it's not an arbitrary figure. We arrived at it with some genuine thought, and it reflects a tough balance, because I don't want to take... I don't want to ever support us taking more money than we show from our residents who require for it. On the other hand, don't want to be caught flat-footed.
So, just to explain, 60%, and most people might not understand that term in our audience, it's basically seven months of expenses. If we had no revenue, we could handle expenses for seven months. So 6% of 7, 12 is about 7.2%. Just to explain.
Thank you. Thank you. Karen, anything else you want to add on that?
Nope. In the next few months, we'll be coming forward with a longer-term financial plan budget for, to start looking at future years, and more to come.
Marvellous.
If I could just add a...
I'm sorry, you should have yielded me the first, I'm mistaken.
I regret that trustee Mitchell's not here, and his presentation to us six months or so ago about the capital improvement that this building needed, because it had been neglected for so long. He got us really thinking about taking a good look at the future, and how we're going to do this. In 2028 and '29, we built in a capital improvement plan based largely on Christmas and putting it together for us. Prioritized all that based on safety and security of employees and residents, and then went into more of the health and safety, and then some of the beautification things that we can work into the budget. So, he got us thinking, and then what Karen just alluded to. We, we've taken that and gone out five years with the overall budget, and that will be up for discussion later in summer and fall, as we begin to vote the budget for next year.
Be, you know, there's a point, and thank you, and forgive me for not recognizing you earlier, because you've done, you've done just a spectacular job, and I'm extremely grateful, because it's a very important, it's a mission critical task. I wrestle with this because I have supported freezing the levy for seven years, under the theory that you don't want to take more of people's hard-earned money than you absolutely have to. Some of the, some of the challenges that will be forthcoming will be absolutely related to the fact that we made a decision, I certainly advocated for it, that we freeze the levy as long as possible. It was tied to a strategy that I still think is very valid, and I think we're seeing some success with it, as we see homes in Tallgrass and in Hot Clay get built and sold, which is, we have to differentiate ourselves, and there are two major ways in which we can do that as a village. One is we are the only one to have publicly available open space in the kind of quantity we do. So if you, if you prize green space and open space, we have lots of it, it's publicly available. Our neighbors in Barrington Hills have plenty, but it's privately owned, you have to commit criminal trespass to access it. Here, it's public, whether it's owned by the county or citizens for concentration or the village. So the other one, though, was that we were very, very sensitive to tax burdens, especially for our residents, and we wanted this to be a community of choice, both on a lifestyle basis and on the basis of financial rules. The downside, you're going to love listening to me eat these words, I brought some barbecue sauce to put on, because it'd be hard for me to check down. The consequence, though, of that is, revenue will soon be overwhelmed by expense. We're not in a crisis, far, far from it. We have plenty of time to make thoughtful, prudent decisions, and we will. But we, we are probably farther down that road because we made the other decision, and I want to be real honest, I would do it again. I would do it again. But it doesn't come free, and that was impressed upon me in your absence. Does that feel good?
That's, that'd be recorded too.
Yeah, yeah, no, I thought you could download it. When you want to go to sleep, you can, well, so. Are there questions on any of this before I call the question on 2020 fiscal, financial plan or other certified state of revenue and fiscal policies?
Just comments, which is thanks to trustee Rigby and Karen, and thank you to everybody who worked on this. This is amazing, you know, having been in business a long time, this is stronger, stronger financial planning than I've seen a lot of businesses that I've worked with in the past, and we all to be congratulated on the great work.
Too bad we're not a profit.
Yeah. Too bad. But I can sincerely thank you for your hard work on this.
I'll call on all the trustees. Trustee Shaller.
I echo, I echo that too. I think we're very fortunate that we have Peggy and Debbie and trustee Rigby and Karen to put this all together, because it's a far cry from, I think, what we experienced in the past. It's just getting better, and it's, it's factual, it's good, it's transparent, and I just think we're fortunate that we have the people that we have that can put that together, because none of that caliber, but I appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Perkins.
Yes, thank you, just what these gentlemen have said. Thank you very much. Again, I, and I...
And trustee Rigby, any further cleanup comments that you'd like to make?
No, no, I thank the comments from the trustees.
Thank you. Then, pardon me, the chair would like a motion to accept the fiscal year 2020 financial plan certified state of revenues and fiscal policy. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Trustee Shaller, second please.
Second.
Trustee Perkins, thank you both. Call the roll.
Trustee Shaller.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Rigby.
President Richardson.
Yes ma'am. Well, the chair would now like a motion to pass ordinance number 2019-0-... What number is this?
0.
Okay, so wait a minute. What was 8B?
It must be the best correct.
Yeah.
8B?
No, 8B was 6.
8B was 6, and 8A was 5.
Oh.
Yeah.
Now, there's a deal reason we took out of order to... That's fine, I just wanted to make sure. 2019-0-4, an appropriation ordinance for fiscal year ending April 30, 2020. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Trustee Shaller, second please.
Second.
Trustee Perkins, thank you both. Call the roll.
Trustee Shaller.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Rigby.
President Richardson.
Yes, thank you. We can move to agenda item 10, the treasurer's report, and Ms. Hirsch, congratulations on the new addition to your family.
Thank you, I'm very excited. Nothing like it, I'm really, this is amazing. Oh, Thomas, by the way.
Oh.
Oh, Thomas, right.
How big was your age for?
Six, six, seven.
Oh.
Twenty-one inches, right, so. I'll just say one thing, because you guys all, like you do with grandparents, but I really didn't know what to expect when I walked in to see my son holding his son. I literally started crying. My son's like, "What's wrong with you?" I go, "I don't know." So I just, you know, just to see, just to see him holding his son was amazing.
There was a wonderful comedian that played in the Chicago area for years. My parents used to take clients of my dad to see him, did a dinner show, he was a musician and comedian, and it was typically a crowd that we would all now qualify for in terms of demographics. And he said, "Are there any grandparents here?" There was a lot of applause, and he said, "See if you agree, the best part about being a grandparent is watching your children be annoyed by their children." So, I'm living, I still aspire to that, but I think that the message is clear. Your recognition for your report.
Thank you. So you have before you the 11 months ended March 31st, 2019, so as you can see, we're almost through our 2000, fiscal year 2019. The first thing I'll mention is, because we've worked a lot on this plan and we're using estimated actuals, we're estimating, you know, as of three months ago where you would end up, and I'm happy to say we're running ahead of what we're estimating, so about $17,000 ahead. We thought we'd be in March, and so we'll see what April brings, but that's, I just wanted to stress to you that we're basing a lot of things on estimated actual, which is bearing, bearing out the issue where you...
And there's no timing, is it accounted for at all? Is that a difference?
No, because we, we were estimating for January, February, March, and April, and as of March, we're trending about $17,000 ahead, so we'll see what April brings. So I don't know what April's going to bring, and I don't know if we've passed April, but we haven't done any accounting on that, so. But that's, I thought was very encouraging. Debbie's done a great job in estimates, she's been doing this for years, and so she's very good at those last couple of months. So, back to our report here, so on page two, you'll see we have assets at $2,363,000, liabilities at $575,000. That plus our equity of $1,788,000 is equal to $2,363,000, equal to our assets. Revenue for 11 months is $3,988,000. Expenses are at $2,777,000. You'll see the results in net income of $321,000. So as, as we've done in the past, we'll pull out our unusual items down below our golden line there on our flash report, and you'll see our income from regular operations is $347,000 compared to this point last year of $180,000. That's a significant difference to last year of $166,000. And that's due to sales and use taxes are trending higher, income taxes higher, utility taxes are higher. A lot of our, a lot of our revenues are higher than last year, billing permit revenues are up, and interest income is also up, and some of that's just due to the economy, you know, it's picked up. And the expense side, our other consultants, our legal expenses down from last year while payroll, and building maintenance is a little bit up, but nothing, that's not beyond, you know, what's been budgeted. So are there any questions so far? And there's no extra comments this month reported either, so that means our, you know, our net income is $321,000 for 11 months at this point. Okay, so we can flip forward to page 10 and 11, we do our actual budget. This will make a lot more sense next month as well when we have our full fiscal year, so we still have one more month to go. You'll see our revenues at 103% actual budget, and that's pulled up pretty much more because the developer impact fees were higher than originally projected. And then expenditures side, we're right at 93% actual budget, so pretty much trending for 11 months there for 11 months. Any questions on the general fund before I move on to the motorfield tax fund?
Not on, on general funding as it is today, but this goes to the longer-term conversation. The news reports say that taxes on people who make more than a quarter of a million dollars are going to go up. There are people in Lake Barrington who certainly fit that description. Will, will our LGD F go up accordingly?
No, it's all just per capita.
Got it, okay.
Correct. And there's also talk that some of those increases the state's not going to share with a lot of municipalities, they're going to keep it all themselves.
There's a great scene in the classic movie Casablanca where the French police chief who's closing down the Rix cafe says, "I'm shocked, shocked to find there's gambling going on in here." It's the same feeling, the state's not going to share with us, I'm shocked.
And who knows that that will result in overall higher income tax, or whatever, now that people will be able to leave the state and so forth, so that's my personal comment on the side, but, yeah. Okay, so we'll go to page 12, that's the motorfield tax fund, and you'll see we take our current assets at $236,000. There's no other expenses anticipated this year, and next year we're not using that fund as well for new roads. We'll let that bill for one more year before we prepare new roads out of that fund next year as well. Page 16, the water sewer fund, you know, you'll see we have net assets of $1,471. That fund, that fund is building up nicely. There's no other planned expenditures this year as well, we're actually one more month to go, and you'll see on page 19, you'll see our revenue is pretty much close to budgeted amounts, and expenditures are trending a little bit below budget. And I'm hoping I'm reporting it longer on the open space, unless there's questions, there's no activity that fund, as we know, is, there's no cash left, I can yield to the general fund going forward. Okay, any questions on the financial statements before we go to the warrants? Okay, so we can move to the warrants, so I don't have too many comments. Warrant A this month, there are a few unusual expenditures, Wilson Water Sewer Fund, Flax River Grove, there's a bill for that to them, you split an interconnect valve of $2,027. There's two invoices to Thomas Contracting, these are very unusual, these were expenses from 2018, April 2018, they're old, we just received those invoices. That was some water main repair work that was done in April 2018, and I know accountant, accountant Debbie Vernon and Administrator Dot Lang, they have verified that those were actual, what was done, and some of the state business in that bill for you, but...
We had to beg for the bills.
Yeah, at some point, so, yeah. And then warrant B, there is one large request, that's Lake County Collector, the amount is $10,155,000, that's the first installment for the real estate taxes. The federal property, we did receive credit on the closing statements, so, you know, we've actually received money to pay those taxes. And the S, you know, usually estimate those on the closing statements, it's actually very close, so that was good to see as well.
A petition for tax exemption has been filed, and it'll be basically effective as of December 18th, well, December 17th, the day we took...
So we should get 14 days back, or 13 days back, whatever it is, okay. Okay, that's in our warrants, there's any questions, happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for the treasurer? Anything on the warrants that you'd like to comment? If not, then the chair would like a motion to approve and block agenda items A to C. A, approve the financial statements as of March 31st, 2019. B, pay bills in the amount of $192,724.68 as listed on the accounts payable warrant A dated May 8, 2019. C, pay bills in the amount of $49,367.89 as listed on the accounts payable warrant B dated May 8, 2019. May I have a motion? So moved. Trustee Burke, may I please have a second?
Second.
Trustee Shaller, thank you both. Call the roll.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Shaller.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Rigby.
Aye.
President Richardson.
Yes.
Nice, and one last comment, we are meeting next week with the auto partner, this beginning work for, the auto for fiscal 2018. I think we just finished it off again, and that starts new soon.
Thank you very, very much, and congratulations again to your side.
Thank you.
Agenda item 11 is the administrator's report, just to remind you, please.
Sure, I have a few things to bring everybody up to date on. The first is, we met with IDOC regarding their proposed drainage work on Route 22, we're waiting to hear back from them on if some design accommodations can be made for that. On Monday, May 20th, at 6 o'clock in our village hall, we are going to be hosting lakes and pond management for homeowners, and that is going to be presented by the Nine Lakes Watershed Partnership, which part of our village is in, and we sent us notified all the HOAs that have ponds and wetlands, and we're going to be promoting it on our social media and website as well for attendance. Last month, BECA hosted our quarterly roundtable with member administrators and managers, and one of the topics was the need for sexual harassment and diversity training, which the executive board of BECA is investigating. Our village, we currently have a policy against harassment for officers and employees, but training's always encouraged. Lake County SMC is considering updating their storm rates. I put it in the P K Week a few weeks ago about the increased rainfall. So the state water survey has posted the suggested state, the suggested 24-hour rain falls to use for new development when you're calculating how much stormwater to retain, and at, meaning last week with Lake County, they think it's probably going to be, they were hoping for this fall, but probably next spring before they actually implement it, but they're encouraging municipalities that we have a development to consider using that right now. It basically translates into about a 15% to 25% increase in the size of stormwater detention volume. So, and then speaking of rainfall, the National Weather Service has reported that in April, our area had six inches of rain, which is 2.64 inches above normal. We also had 7.9 inches of snow, which is almost seven inches. So, you know, it just seems like Lake County gets a lot. The technology assessment report on our IT system is forthcoming. Deborah Vernon and I sat down and met with them and went over the draft, and we received the final, final draft earlier this week, so we'll be finding that up in the next week or so, we'll be reporting on it in the next month. I attended the Lake County Council of Mayor's Transportation Committee meeting last week, that's where funding policies and programming and project evaluation, evaluation methods are, are looked at, looking at being changed, and the primary responsibility of the Lake County Council of Mayor's is to program that federal transportation funding, so in the community development block programs, STP funds, so if we're ever going to apply for those kind of things, that's the committee that decides if we give the money or not. And I also attended the Illinois Senate Subcommittee on Capital Funding last Friday to raise like, they took testimony on infrastructure needs in Lake County, you probably heard that the state is considering a capital bill, like with everything, so like, where's the money going to come from, right? So, they requested, BECA requested a month ago, letters from all the communities asking, like, here's projects we would like funded, and I submitted that to BECA and to our senators at the time, and for the capital funding hearing, we submitted both, our letter that we sent to both Senator McHoney and Senator Bush's offices. So, thank you.
Are there questions for the administrator in the report?
Quick question, it's related to Route 22, not in Barrington, but I get this asked a lot, because construction that's taking place east of 59. What's the nature of that work?
That's also drainage work.
I see.
And there's also construction going on by the same contractor at Signal Hill in 59 here now.
Also drainage work?
Right. This third project that they proposed, which is in Lake Barrington, just east of Stonehedge Golf Course, is the one that they, right now, are considering to redesign up. So, it's the same kind of project over by the fire station, Lake River Fire Station on Route 22.
The work on 59 and Signal Hill was pretty well completed for the last month.
It's almost, yeah, just...
And those finishing up work now, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions for the administrator? You know, just to Andy's point, we were trying, Lynn and I were driving toward Lake Surf, and we saw them putting up the stoplight with no road. And I had to think about it for a moment, and then I remembered Karen, I told her it's to accommodate the one lane.
Right. Yeah, it's a temporary, with a one-way traffic, yeah.
That would guide what is starting.
Yeah.
Further, further questions for the administrator? Then we'll move to agenda item 12, the clerk's report.
We planned to have our summer newsletter in residents' nail boxes by the end of this month, or the latest early June, so if anyone has any contributions, they could send them to me. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions for the Clerk? We'll move to the reports of the Standing Committees. 13A, I'll take them together, A and D, because those are mine. I showed this in the committee of the whole, but, Hallie, you can zoom in on this a little bit. This mail piece came from our good friends at Speedway about their cafe. And I am informed by very wise people on this dais that the Paninis are particularly desirable. So I'm actually going to go over there and get much more. Because they have steak and cheese, turkey bacon Swiss, chicken bacon ranch, barbecue chicken, buffalo chicken Italian, grilled chicken, Chipotle chicken, ham and cheese, and turkey cheese. I'm going to be in the mood for a turkey bacon Swiss. So this is a wonderful thing for our community. It's a great neighbor, critical citizen. And I encourage people, when these things come in the mail, to patronize all of our local vendors. In addition to that, of course, we have Orshoe Grill, and we have Onion Pub, and we have Zaza's, so. And, thank you. And I'm, you should never go hungry, Lynn, Karen. I am working, this goes to Karen's point a moment ago about lakes and pond management, I'll send this to you. There's an organization I will work with called Great Lakes St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, is for those cities in the US and Canada that order the Great Lakes, or, or the St. Lawrence Seaway. And I'm working with them on some things in my, in my other job. And they did some recent lawn smart tips for residents. It's long, so I won't read all of it, but I'll kind of give some of the highlights. Water wise, is one of their key tips for, for that. And they have an interesting test. It's the tuna can fish, everybody knows what a can of tuna looks like. All you need to do is water long enough to fill that tuna can on your lawn, twice a week. It doesn't matter how dry it is or anything else, the tuna can fish. So just put it out there when you turn on the sprinkler, and when it's filled, your lawn has more than enough water that it needs. Mowing smart, keep those settings at at least three inches. And the higher the grass, the better it can result, resist drought when the weather gets dry. Property schools, well, I did not notice, grass clippings are actually beneficial. And you should allow them to decompose and recycle, because they put nutrients back into the lawns and the green spaces. Leaves, on the other hand, appear, apparently are the enemy. They can create problems because of left-in-place dwell, they can smother your lawn, and they can also get into waterways and other environmentally sensitive areas. So keep breaking the leaves to make sure, but you don't have to worry about the grass clippings, they're actually good for your lawn. Control stormwater runoff. Rain barrels and rain guards, and we have one right out the front door here, are great ways to do it, and the cost of rain barrels aren't particularly outrageous. And they, they also encourage some gardening that features native plants that are often more drought resistant. Smart landscaping, this kind of goes to the same thing. We have very clay-heavy soil here, so, and we have unique climate conditions, so keeping, keeping aware of that. Lawn and garden stores, professional landscapers, etc., are really great. Something that, when I first started working with Karen 20 years ago, you were eight, and I was eleven, is salt-loving, I didn't say this for her, salt-loving plants, or salt-resistant plants. It came up with, you know, roadways because of salt on the roads in the wintertime, but you can find little plants that are drought resistant, that I've called in the industry primarily, less thirsty plants. And then salt-resistant or salt-loving plants, depending on your property. Pollinator health, this goes back about five years ago, and Randy Alfred spoke about this. One of the things, there was a White House Task Force on this called the Pollinator Health Task Force. And they, they said, you know, as part of your landscaping strategy, you should think about a pollinator garden as a way of creating more food and more places for pollinators to forage. And they said, avoid applying insecticides on your lawn when flowers, when lawns are flowering, because that's how they end up in nectar. So keeping your grass cut at the right level consistently will help remove the flowering weeds in your lawn that might attract pollinators. This was actually something that was a pretty big deal at the White House, in the second of our chairman, and it's, I've actually glanced at the report because of your comments previously. Apply products correctly, this is so important. And you guys knew years ago, when I worked for Sill's after they owned a true group. You know, you're only allowed to poke fun at yourself these days, so I'll poke fun at husbands. You know how much every husband uses, as much as is in the bag. Because if the setting, if the label says set it at six, well, 12 is twice as good. No, follow the label, follow the label, follow the label, follow the label. Be careful to keep it off hard surfaces like a driveway or sidewalks. And windy conditions can, you know, cause drift, so you want to try to deal with, with the windy conditions anyway. And then last but not least, you can get advice. Go to one of the retailers that sell the products, or landscaping professional like Dora here in Lake Barrington. Lawn care professionals can spot emerging problems, so. Since you mentioned it, it caused me, and I'm working with this Great Lakes St. Lawrence Seaway Mayor's Group, and it's, it's quite interesting. The Canadians have a much more rigorous environmental or regulatory structure than, than most of the US states do, so I'm going to lie in our neighbors' mark of the border. And I did my, the other thing is I've been invited to be a speaker, and I do this at my own expense, but I'm going to be in the UK on business in July. And I'm actually going to be a panelist at the Local Government Association, kind of the British version of the US Conference of Mayors. Talking about economic development, so I may have to have Trustee Burke come with me. I'll just. In Borthland, England, south of London on the coast.
Of you.
So that's all I have, we can move to 13B, Community Relations Special Events. Karen, Jim gave you a report of income?
Yes, he did, and I'll be happy to read it. I'll just bear a praise. Lisa and Trustee Thompson and myself are working on looking into a movie night, or a music night, or both, at Friar Farm sometime this summer. Lisa and I are investigating experiences Lake syrup has had, because they offer both. And he said the veterans of LBS have volunteered to help with that as well, with parking vehicles, or any drinks that we offer for sale. And he's having conversations with Attorney Bateman on that. Also, the veterans of LBS invite all Village Board members, staff and residents, to join them for their annual Memorial Day ceremony. It begins at 11:00 AM, followed by a noon complimentary hot dog lunch. Guest speaker is Captain Melissa A. Barnett, Nurse Corps, United States Navy. I think there's some flyers out there on this as well. And so Memorial Day flyer, oh, is also enclosed. LBS residents report they're looking forward to village development of the federally in property, and to another easily accessed activity area. And Local Law Mural, he is looking into preparing a redo of the infamous mural, and looking to frame it, and so it can be moved around, so. That's it.
Thank you for that. I'm glad you could see, economic development, Trustee Burke?
Thank you, President Richardson, two quick updates. One is I had a very productive call with Tony Longaro, who is the broker who is now representing the marketplace, the owner of the marketplace, looking for tenants. There were several reasons behind that. One is that there's been a lot of interest expressed in trying to get a breakfast slash lunch style place put in the marketplace. It's a need in Lake Barrington, and one that would be well patronized by, in particular, residents that are close by the village, or in, in Lake Barrington shores. So happens that, coincidentally, know someone who's in the breakfast restaurant business, looking to expand in the area, and have put those two together, and they've already had several onsite, onsite visit of the property, as well as follow-up calls. And then the three of us will be sitting down at some point, the prospective tenant, the broker and I, to talk about options for potentially placing a breakfast joint at the marketplace. The other part of that conversation that was offered to me, and Trustee Sheller, you may be aware of this, is that the PSI Properties is reaching out directly to Lake Barrington shores, and you guys talked about that, to get, do some additional surveying. Right, they were going to do a monkey survey, or. Yeah. Or what the residents would like. They intend to do that, soon. A monkey survey. You've got to be careful, Jenny, it's what you mean, you've got to be careful. Yeah. But I liked the conversation with this gentleman, he seems, you know, we've had, you know, the owner over there has had some frustration with property managers in the past. These, these folks seem pretty motivated, and they seem to be doing some of the right stuff. One thing in particular that they're quite, continue to be motivated about, is to try to find something suitable that could take up space in the, in the, in the empty outlaw that's there in the corner. The challenges I'm learning from this particular property manager is that there are actually, there's room for two, there's two, effectively two lots there, or enough room for two businesses there. And if not more, and in order to make it cost-effective, there's no, you can't land lease all of it, or its part of it, to just one person. So he had lots of people who said, I'll take a third of what you have. But it's not really economically viable, so what really has to happen is he has to find a way to build that out, and then find tenants. And, and that's not inconsistent with what we're learning, it's not unlike over at Lake Barrington Commons, where it's sort of like, you need an anchor tenant, and then you need to build something to suit, and you have to have people lined up, instead of then I'll build it for you, as opposed to building something. And even at Pepper Park, if you recall, it was a little bit built. The owner knew that they were going to be building the Pepper Park Coffee, and that became the, the anchor tenant. They did not know beyond that, but they decided if they build it, that people will come, and they've been pretty successful with that. It doesn't always work that way, but generally speaking, if it does work that way, the subsequent tenants are, are real kind of mixed different uses. Rarely are they the large revenue generators, because they're just kind of looking for space, as opposed to when you aggressively go after an anchor or two that are going to be, and if you recall, a few months ago, we talked a lot of difference between what's real revenue generation versus, you know, very modest revenue generation. So there is some activity at the marketplace, and we've not had a lot there, and I, so I'm encouraged by that. And part of it is just building a relationship with PSI, and letting them know that the village of Lake Barrington wants to partner with them. And as they are looking at pursuing opportunities, that we would like to be brought to speed and involved, to see how we can support the development of new tenants in that area. So more to come, I just wanted to know that, that there's some, some discussion in, in Trustee Sheller. I'm at the right time, I'm hopeful that we can collaborate, you know, since you're close to the, the folks, and figure out what could go there and be successful. Because if we can convince business owners that there is that kind of demand and need, it goes a lot further than thinking, if I build it, then it will come. And patronize me, as opposed to showing people some data that suggests that they would, right? The, the other, the other thing that took place in the past month is that Karen and I met with the new owners of the old Pasquazie property, All-American reclaimed. They're in the midst of their build-out, you know, getting ready to open for business, their goal, I believe, was to be open this summer. It, it's hit a little bit of a snag, I guess I would call it, in that upon subsequent fire department review, there appears to be some, based upon use, there appears to be some need for additional sprinkling in the building. And that was not altogether anticipated at the time, and so the owner, of the owner of All-American reclaimed is getting estimates and figuring out what he can, and Karen and I are asking to get back to us with that, and see if we can collectively, working both with the fire department, and with the owner, and with the landlord, is there a way that we can get this done? And the latest updates is these, these quotes are being, are being collected by, by the tenant, if you will. And when he's got them all done, we're going to sit down and have another review, both with the fire department, Karen and myself, to figure out, in effect, is there a cost-effective, or at least onerous way that we can get this person in business sooner, rather than later, in phases so that, and figure out how the phase is processed out, so that, because it will become burdensome for him, for him if he can't start generating revenue. It's that simple. So this is an example where we, as the village, have got to be soon as partners. And that doesn't mean we come up with a checkbook, because it's clear we don't have a checkbook to do that sort of stuff. But partners, when it comes to working with the fire department, and working internally about what we can do to be flexible, to allow this person to operate while we work through the rest of this issue. Does you have anything to add to that, Karen?
Yeah, that was a great summary.
Okay, so it's, it's a challenging situation, unfortunate situation. And we've learned a little bit from this, in terms of ensuring that, that in particular, a fire department review is something that we have done well in advance, so that everybody understands, you know, what's going on. A little bit of this was learned after the fact, and after people were already making commitments to do certain things. So more to come on that, but that's, that's, I just want to be open with people, that we've hit a little bit of a snag, and we feel that we can work through it, but it's going to take some collaborative effort from a number of parties to do so. And that's my report.
Thank you, that's a great report. Are there questions for Trustee Burke? Okeydoke. 13B, Financial Administration, Trustee Ripley?
Thank you, I apologize for losing my voice for some reason. But I feel good. In accordance with Village ordinance that we passed in 2017 concerning community donations, the village put out an announcement soliciting requests for donations back during the winter, and in February. In March, received a number of requests. I've painted out a sheet there that shows the requests that the committee that passed them, that has recommended to approve about this warrant. Several of them, we've just sort of renewed the previous donations, COA and the Veterans of LBS. Karen, you want to talk a little bit about CFC and the, and Flint Creek Watership?
Sure.
We, we get a return in kind, that's.
Yeah.
Returns us more into an investment than a donation.
It's kind of exciting, so as you know, Cuban Township donated about $12,000 in services for clearing the buckthorn along the Lake Barrington Road this winter. And working with Faesenon from Flint Creek Spring Big Watership Partnership, we started talking.
So you're a big guy.
Yeah, I know. We started talking about what's, just a name, Healthy Hedges Program, which would be a demonstration of, of native plantings that residents could go take a look at, or we could fire together, what, everything that's planted out there. That provides screening, but it's also good for the pollinators and natives, and it's not buckthorn or bezos. So talking with the Watership Partnership and the Citizens for Conservation, they both agreed to use their $2,000 donation to help the village with design and planting, and getting volunteers to help do this. We've also reached out to the Park District, and the Park District is committed to spending in the very near future, maybe for the end of May, about $10,000 to install a little bit of a berm by the soccer field, like the 75, 80 feet where the soccer nets are. And doing some landscaping, I'll call it on the village property, you know, like an extension of that berm that's out there already, but with some native shrubs and so forth. And then also, they've committed to a donation of another $2,000 to us, to help with the other park. So this is a way we can get that area screened, so, you know, for safety for the balls and stuff that are kicked, but also as a demonstration project, so residents who may have buckthorn on their own properties can come and take a look, and go, oh, this might be a good idea for me. So it's all coming together on little pieces, and we're excited.
Thanks, Karen. John had a question about Maine in Heaven. Maine in Heaven is a nonprofit down in Barrington, using micro horses as company animals for disabled kids and unable-bodied kids and adults as well. And it's kind of like a local penny, so they come to you, they've been in American woods, for example. So we think these are worthy of our consideration. It totaled $7,775, which is. It totaled $7,775, which is considerably below what we had budgeted for this year. So we do, you know, the years that I own it. So we have a potential here for budget excess, which is a good thing right now. So anyway, we all base that for your consideration.
Great. Are there questions for trustee Rickby on this and then we can. There's no vote?
No, no vote, just.
Sessi the board. Sessi the board. Any, any thoughts you might offer on the list?
Yeah, no. First, an overall comment, I appreciate you getting this done because I recall we talked in the past, it seemed at times a little willy-nilly in terms of what we were doing and you just said, "First of all, let's just get our arms around what we're doing."
Thank you, administrator.
Thanks, administrator. Karen Beltline. So, and most of these we're well familiar with and have been supporting in one way or the other, so I think they're all very worthy. So I just appreciate this work being done.
Thank you. Trustee Sheller?
No, certainly. Seems like it's well thought out and I almost look forward to supporting whatever we can in the financial restrictions that we can, but every one of them seems all worthwhile.
Thank you. Trustee Perkins?
Yes, I'd like to say, thank you. You're much appreciated.
I know. All of these make a lot of sense because they relate to where we live and they're tied to our day-to-day lives. I really, I enjoy the Maine in Heaven one because I was overseeing my dad when they were. And I, I have really come to appreciate the therapeutic benefit for autistic children of comfort animals. Really helps. And for anybody in a particularly vulnerable situation, those things are great. Mike actually had a lot of experience with this, that whether it's miniature horses or dogs or there is a remarkably comforting effect and settling, calming effect.
Absolutely. Even in technology, for instance, residents or individuals with Alzheimer's, dementia, they actually have baby pet seals that are animatronic and it's very comforting. Residents petting them and they make small noises and they move a little bit. So even, even the technology incorporated into that aspect of comfort measures.
Thank you for the work on this. It's really, I'm a big fan of the Bacoa stuff. Your residents certainly use it, but we have folks in other parts of the community who do the dial and ride service. That's so important because you don't want folks to be isolated. You don't want folks to be isolated. And CFC has been such a great part of all this and so many of the things. And Flint Creek is a major waterway going through our community. This, this just is right down the middle of Fairway Sensible. I'm delighted, I appreciate you guys doing this. There are, there are other mammals that are not known for their comforting and calming effects, among them Irish Catholics. I can do that at one, I can say that. Just don't tag one of me. We don't need a vote on this, but I think you can proceed on the basis of the knowledge. Randy, anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's all. That completes my report.
Thank you.
Eleven and a half, open spaces in village facilities. Do you have anything to report on this?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thirteen G, public safety and gave community, trustee Sheller?
Thank you, president Richardson. Active shooters continue to strike American workplaces on a daily basis. However, each attack is different, their commonalities including confusion. The new deputy chief lieutenant Chris Thompson came to the village and deep training their staff in the workplace and administrator Delton Lang thinks it would be advantageous to arrange some training for the entire board. I have talked to lieutenant Thompson, also to lieutenant Scott Kirk, who's here, about trying to arrange such a training session for the board and suggest that perhaps prior to next month's regular meeting, we take about an hour to go through training on active shooter preparedness. Lieutenant Kirk, that's where we'll take about an hour with the program?
Yes, that's the abbreviated program. It's designed just to get your, get your feet wet and you have some options. There's a full program, but that's about a half a day, but we have people that have been training in this for probably like the past three years. So I spoke with the deputy who's been training and he would love to come here and offer this training to you.
I suggest that perhaps that's something we could.
I don't know if we could do it at the June meeting, but maybe that's.
Well, whatever.
Yeah, at a future meeting.
Yeah.
And they would like to know, obviously, we select the date and we would do it so they could be prepared and make sure that we have something.
You have to work on your four hours to conduct and then the one hour, is that?
There is a one-hour program. I spoke to deputies, so.
Okay.
But anything less than an hour, we wouldn't be able to divulge information on it.
Okay. So I'll contact you in the near future about reaching.
Yeah, okay.
We'd be glad to. We'll schedule next month, but perhaps a month after.
Okay.
Thank you. And I will invite all the planning commissioners as well to attend.
And certainly, Lieutenant Kirk, welcome again in your new position. I think between now and our next meeting, we will probably have a new day shift person taking care of North Barrington and Lake Barrington. Do you want to have a, on that at all?
Correct, yes. Deputy Chip Reeves is going to be leaving the sheriff's office. He's been with us for over 30 years and I don't know when he started working in North and Lake Barrington, but it may be over 10 years at this point. He's been working in this area for a long time and provided a great service to your village. Additionally, which you may or may not know, probably not, deputy JR Hallett, who also has worked in Lake and North Barrington for some time, he's also retiring the first week of June. So you may not know him because, you know, at 10:30 when he starts, most, most people are not, are not active outside, but he's been working down here for a long time as well and he's leaving as well. But we'll find great replacements for these deputies and provide the same great service that we have been for many years.
I think there've only been a couple incidents recently, no major activity in this territory that I'm aware of. I think we had a couple of broken windshielders in LBS, but I think other than that, for a while we had some break-ins, things like that, that seems to have calmed down unless you're aware of something more.
I'm not aware of any major incidents recent in your village.
But again, we always echo, we have twice as many guys as people and if you see anything unusual, please pick up the phone and call the Lake County Sheriff's Department. That's our police department. We did have an incident that was questioned, Detective Kirk, in LBS and all of a sudden they're like five or six pointers there and that's something that local police, you know, just can't provide. If you're up the road, somebody's patrolling 59 or Kelsey Road, they don't have the resources that we have. That's the advantage along with a lot of them, the Lake County Sheriff's Department, is when the need arises, they're enforced if the need be, so appreciate it.
Additionally, you know, what you see on the surface is one thing with those squad cars, but we also have a highly skilled investigation division, three canine dogs and a bomb dog as well. So we have a lot of resources and they're all waiting to your village.
Helicopter if you needed, I suppose, as I recall one time, but somebody we were chasing in the area and those helicopter.
I believe that program lost funding.
Oh, did it? No, no helicopter. Okay. Sorry about that. But anything else? We appreciate your joining us and attending our meeting and as always, we appreciate service that you provide to our community.
Absolutely. Call us if you need us or if you have any questions, you can call me anytime.
Thank you. Just after. This hasn't been recent, when Chris Thompson was in this job some years ago. And I spent a lot of time in Mike's building because as I mentioned, my dad and my dad live there. I had somebody ask me, because he was standing up here dressed as you are, "What's all the stuff on your belt?"
Do you want me to go through it?
Yeah.
Well, I got a flashlight, radio, taser, everybody calls it a bezel, extra ammunition, handcuffs, OC pepper spray, my firearm course and then a baton.
And how often do you?
I got gloves in the back.
And gloves in the back? What is it all weigh, all in?
Probably about 20 pounds or something.
And what's on the middle of your chest?
Well, that's my body camera, which we started that program a couple of years ago.
He's recording you, Rick.
Yeah. You hate yourself.
It's basically a helicopter. We don't have a helicopter. We do have a drone program, so if there was an incident where we needed to do an aerial search, say there was a missing child in a forest area, we could put up our drone and we do have that resource available to us.
Is that also an infrared?
I believe they do have the, I think they call it FLIR. Don't ask me what that stands for, but yeah, they do have.
Forward-looking infrared radar.
There you go. Trustee Reba, you nailed it.
How often do you, do you do all the active sworn officers take certification, update training on the firearm issues?
So we qualify once a year as a state qualification, but we have training periodically throughout the year in addition to that qualification, so.
God bless you. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, so many, so many times, police, I think, police officers get a bad rap for the use of that firearm, but when you put yourself, you think about, you put yourself in a position of someone aiming or looking at you, the amount of time that you have to make a decision as to how to react is just amazing. I just like, and it's, so many times I think you get a bad rap for reacting the way you do in self-defense, but I tell you, it's either, sometimes it's you or them. And it's, that's a tough position to be in. Appreciate that you put yourself in harm's way as often as you do.
Thank you, trustee Sheller. I don't got a wood or anything else.
Stay a little way.
Thank you. Thanks very much for being with us. You had a great night.
Thank you.
John, anything else you'd like to add?
I attended a weather exercise for outdoor event planning that was held up at Lake County in April and it just kind of set up the situation, what happens if you have a major outdoor activity? What resources do you have? And they had set up some various exercises about tornadoes being in the area and another severe weather, how, how much pre-planning you need to do. It was just an interesting exercise that I went through. Probably the interesting part about it is the National Weather Service does not have the ability to track lightning. You watch every TV channel in the Chicago Land area, they can always track where lightning is. The National Weather Service at this point in time can't do the same thing that the TV stations have.
Or your Volta yet.
Huh? Their Volta, yeah, the National Service War, yeah. They have a sky-warn, Volta, Lake County Storm Watchers, things like that. So it was an interesting, it was an interesting exercise up at Lake County. Correct, Countryside Fire Protection District Chief Cryer was one of the speakers at the annual public town hall forum that the Chamber of Commerce had. They have a six and a half million dollar budget. They cover 48 square miles and they have a three to four rating, they have a high rating. So when they're five years old, they didn't realize that the Barrington Countryside has been split from Barrington for five years. So again, we are fortunate, both the sheriff's department, the fire protection that we have, both the Barrington Countryside and the Wakanda Fire Department takes care of our village's north end and south end. Barrington Countryside, as I think I mentioned last month, is getting three old school buses from National Express to do training in school buses and they had to sign, it was signed over to them for that. I go to those meetings. Two of our residents, Ken and Glenna Merwin, who had lived in Lake Barrington shores, have since moved to Lake Barrington Woods, had the most fantastic miniature fire truck collection that I've ever seen. And I suggested to the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District that perhaps they ought to take that over. They, they are taking it over. They are going to create a great big display in their lobby and give the Merwins credit for that. So it's kind of neat that a resident of our community, who's still a resident of our community, has got something that is part of the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District. But I saw this when I went into their house in LBS and figured, boy, you can't just throw this thing away. It's the largest little miniature display I've ever seen of fire equipment. Don't know if you've seen their annual report, but if you want a copy, Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District, which is kind of an unusual outline of what a district is. But you know, we talked about the area up there near the Prairie Middle School that they wanted to build another station that got rejected. So they're, excuse me, they're still looking at what alternative of this third, third station. Wakanda Fire Department attend their meetings as well. Last time we went through a couple of names for those. They did have a promotion of battalion chief, Dan Frye, F-R-Y. Promotion of lieutenant Scott Schreier, S-E-H-R-A-Y-E-R. Appointment of a new hire, James Finney, F-I-N-N-E-Y. And then Pat, who was the speaker at the Barrington. Anyhow, Pat Kane, who is now the new battalion chief to replace one of those, the battalion chiefs that did retire. Okay, then quickly, sheriff's department, Tallgrass, I understand, Commissioner Lang, I wondered why you didn't hear back from Kathy Schwang. She's been replaced as salesperson over there, but apparently they're moving along. It's just a matter of some transition that is taking place. They outplayed, they haven't heard anything, so they're happy down there as far as Lake Barrington shores. You heard about the veterans having their famous tube steaks, otherwise known as hot dogs. For Memorial Day, you're all invited to attend that. They do have a club fair coming up this Saturday at Live, you're invited to attend that as well. Ted Meyer.
Thank you. Questions for John? Then thirteen H, Hilton Infrastructure, trustee Perkins?
I have no report.
Okay, watch this, you guys. There's nothing under 14 old business, 15 ordinances, 16 resolutions, 17 new business, 18, second opportunity in the agenda for the public to address the village board, no one seeks our permission. 19, no closed session. 20, nothing. Under other, motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
By trustee Rickby, man, this is a subject. By trustee Sheller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We object.